Okay, good evening. As the head elf, I will call this meeting to order. Our Vice President Laura Toye will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Good evening. Welcome to the 1,959th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. This will be a voting meeting. Minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting that is scheduled to be on Wednesday, January 18th. That seems late, but I'll go with it. Ms. Nash, will you please take the roll call?
Vice President Toye.
Here.
Councilmember Barr.
Here.
Councilmember Donovanick.
Here.
Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre, I'm sorry, Councilmember McCullough.
Here.
President Jolly.
Present. We have six members of the council here this evening. At this time, I will entertain a motion for the regular meeting minutes from December 5th of 2022.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion to approve from Donovanick, support from McCullough. Does anybody on the council have any recommendations or additions or comments to the minutes? I see none. Does anybody in the audience have any comments on the meeting minutes from December 5th? I see none. At this time, we'll note that we now have a full council, and I'll ask Ms. Nash to take the vote on the minutes.
Vice President Toye.
Yes.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovanick.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. The minutes of December 5th are approved. At this time, we will go to audience communication. Audience communication is set at 30 minutes at the beginning of the meeting so that members of the audience of the community can address the council for a time of up to three minutes on any items or topics that are not scheduled on the agenda this evening. We got a special new clock that we're breaking in here, so.
Tell me when.
Okay, we'll start. Good evening, sir. Tell me your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Steve Johnson. I live in Livonia near a vacant 38-acre field that is on Merriman between six- and seven-mile roads. The field is Livonia Public Schools property and their neighbor to the north. The field has become, over the years, among other things, a dog park that is unlicensed, unregulated, unfenced, and unsafe. We should all feel fortunate. No one has been hurt over there or worse. Daily unleashed dogs are brought to this property. This is an ongoing nuisance as defined by Livonia ordinances and must be abated according to ordinances. The ordinance reads in part, "Creating or maintaining nuisances prohibited." "Nuisances are not to be created or maintained or to exist in the premises of which such person is the owner or exercises control or management thereof." This places responsibility square on Livonia Public Schools and their neighbor. Both councilmember McCullough and myself have appealed to Livonia Public Schools to take actions to abate the potentially dangerous conditions on their properties. They have refused to this date. I believe it is time for the mayor and the city attorney to get involved for the sake of public's sake near this property. And I've emailed all of you videotapes. We have evidence of these loose dogs often running in packs over there, running away from their owners where the owners don't even see them. I shared a video with the council and the Livonia Public Schools of a larger dog that almost came in contact with two young boys. One of the boys ended up falling into the creek and could have hurt himself terribly because of this. We need action. This goes beyond the people that are just coming there every day with their dogs. This now involves the people who control this property. We need to take action before there's a tragedy there, and we're all gonna feel really bad about that, that we didn't, we weren't proactive on this. So going forward, I'm hoping that we can all work together to abate this situation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Come on up to the podium.
Okay.
Please tell me your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Sheri Amici, and I'm a proud Livonia resident for going on 30 years now. I am grateful for this opportunity for freedom of expression and free speech, and I hope to use it wisely. Our beautiful nation is under attack from the inside out. What is freedom and liberty? For everyone buying goods made in China for cheap wages, I wonder, do they not know that China is not free? Do they not know that the Chinese government, the CCP, is totalitarian and monitors citizens' every move, dictates how many children a person is allowed to have? Do they not know that slavery is alive and well in China, producing the very goods we buy here in America? Facebook and YouTube are banned in China. TikTok is okay. Why? Because it's owned and managed by the CCP, and our citizenry is being propagandized by its messaging. Why am I raising issues about China at our local city council meeting? Because asking government to control who one can hire, who one must provide a service to in a shop or a business is not an idea built on freedom and liberty. It's a concept built on government control, and if permitted to continue, there is no end. And where government control seemingly for a benefit, it soon can just as easily be taken away. Liberty is not easy. This divisiveness is spreading across America, and it's not designed to bring more freedom and protections. It's designed to tear America down, to pit American against American, and then swallow us whole without firing a shot. I want to thank the Livonia City Council for their prudent decision with regard to the proposed nondiscrimination ordinance, the NDO, which in my mind is anything but nondiscriminatory. Again, not because of issues around gender expression ideology, but because of liberty, true liberty. Freedom is not a gift bestowed upon us by other men, but it is a right that belongs to each of us by the laws of God and nature. Benjamin Franklin said that in 1807. I invite each of you, I implore every citizen, do not hate your neighbor for not wanting another government intervention to regulate thought and action, but educate yourself on liberty, celebrate liberty, welcome differing ideas from yours and permit it, and remember that America will never be destroyed by the outside. If we falter and lose our freedoms, it will be because we destroyed ourselves. Abraham Lincoln said that. Thank you, and Merry Christmas to you all.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Jim and Becky. I live on Fairway Street in Livonia.
Give us one second to start the timer here.
Sure.
There we go.
Go ahead, sir.
I want to thank each of you for your service to Livonia and its residents. Livonia is one of the great cities in America, thanks to your stewardship and vision. During the past year, I've had the opportunity to attend several city council meetings. At each one, I'm very impressed with your welcoming, positive attitude, how you listen effectively to both your fellow councilmen and the residents who come to speak. You exhibit and demonstrate great teamwork, and your discussions are thoughtful and well researched. Each of you are very passionate about Livonia. And your decisions are based, in my opinion, on a high degree of ethics and integrity. With all the turmoil in politics today, the Livonia City Council members are a shining example of civility in government, which is very rare. I wish each of you and your family a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
You too. Thank you, sir. Give us one second. We're all set. Good evening. Your name and address, please.
Jody White. I'm a Livonia resident, and I'm calling, I want to talk about item X on tonight's agenda. Is this the right time to do it?
It is not.
Okay. So when would that be?
When we call item X.
Okay. Then I'm gonna hold my time for that, if that's all right.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir. We'll restart the clock.
I was open to pick up a little extra time.
No, you're not that lucky, sir. Good evening. Your name and address, please.
Christopher Martin, the great state of Michigan. And I do like the outfits tonight. It's nice. Just kind of an update for some individuals who might be interested. I did meet with Ted Davis yesterday. I talked to him for about 18 minutes. And this is concerning the, what I feel is we should have some paid employees that are helping with the meals for the seniors. By relying solely on volunteers, you're never gonna have five hot meals Monday through Friday. It's just not gonna, it's not gonna happen. So in talking with Mr. Davis, I did feel that for the 18 minutes, it's 18 minutes of my life that I'm never gonna get back. And he seemed to want to spend more time in looking for excuses than looking for solutions. So somewhat disappointed. That doesn't mean that I'm not, that I'm not gonna continue with this next year, okay? But I do remember, though, last year. It was December 13th. The woman stood right here. And she requested, I guess it was her Christmas wish, that Ted Davis learned to be kind and get a heart. You know, yesterday I realized that Santa Claus isn't in the profession of doing heart transplants. So I do hope, though, that he does think about helping the older people over there. And once again, I'll say that we need paid people that'll show up every day, wear a mask, a hairnet, rubber gloves, and help hand out the food there to the older people. Like I said, I was a little bit surprised by his, really, a lack of interest. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. If there is no other audience communication at this time, we will close audience communication. We'll move on to announcements from the council. Do any of my colleagues have announcements? Ms. McIntyre?
Thank you, President Jolly. First, I'd like to take this opportunity to wish our colleague, Ms. Toye, a very, very happy birthday.
Thank you.
She'll be celebrating next week, and it's not really appropriate for elected officials to receive gifts, but if anybody has any Bentley memorabilia, I think we could, I think we could find within the ethics laws for those to be sent to Ms. Toye to celebrate her birthday. But in all seriousness, Laura is a wonderful colleague. She has just enormous love for the city, enormous love for people in the city, enormous love for people. And it's a joy to serve with her, and I think we'll all be happy to celebrate another birthday with her next week. Also want to wish my oldest son, David, a happy 25th birthday on January 5th. And another, one other happy announcement, kind of sad for the community, but the end of a, or not the end, but the final chapter in a very distinguished career on the judicial bench for the Honorable Timothy M. Kenny. Judge Kenny will be retiring as the chief judge of the Wayne County Third Circuit Court at the end of the year. He's an exceptional, he's an exceptional jurist, and he's an exceptional human being, and we've been fortunate. The Livonia community has been very fortunate to have had Judge Kenny and his wife as residents for a long time. He served on the bench for, since 1996. And prior to that, he spent 20 years as an assistant Wayne County prosecutor. He has received more awards than he could ever, will ever be able to display, even if he turned every wall in his home over to display them. He was, among the things that he's done, not only was he just an excellent judge, he is a great human. And he served as a judge for the Mental Health Court Pilot Program and also the Adult Drug Program, which are diversionary criminal justice paths in Wayne County. And one year, I had the great honor of attending a graduation from the Adult Drug Court and its incredibly moving experience, because these are people that instead of heading to prison to try to overcome substance abuse, they were diverted into a program where they received treatment and help. It was, it was also, they were limited. It was not that they were out doing whatever they wanted to in the community. It's very supervised, and they had to, they have to comply with all sorts of rules and regulations to be in the program. But he's just an outstanding person. He's been an instructor at Madonna University. He worked closely with our police department in adding some mental health folks to our, to our police force. I think council probably remembers some meetings we had with him. But want to wish him and his wife June all the best in their retirement and many more years. And I know that the judge will be looking for ways to continue to serve. On a sad note, this week, we lost a dear friend of the city, Marilyn Mutzy. Marilyn had worked in the clerk's office, or I'm sorry, in the inspection department, I think, beginning in 2009. And she was furloughed for a short time and then came back. She moved in 2020 up, she took her, she took her responsibilities as being in charge of all things related to the zoning board and those meetings up to the city council office. Marilyn was a friend to everyone when I started in my very first position with the city on the zoning board. Marilyn was the bright light to help you figure out what you were doing, make sure you had your materials. She had an unbelievably difficult but valiant battle with cancer for the last two years. It was unrelenting. She fought it courageously. She fought it with grace, and she wanted to keep living. But our funeral was held today, and if we could maybe just have a moment of silence in memory of our good friend Marilyn Mutzy. Thank you. And I have one more, one more item that I wanted to clear up some confusion. There was some confusion. I was mistakenly, and I think inadvertently, tagged in a Facebook post by the Lebanese American Chamber of Commerce. On December 7th, they were holding a ceremony at the Basilica of St. Mary. And it was a, I believe, it was a ceremonial groundbreaking for a new project that they have planned there. The paperwork is just starting to make its way through the, through the city process. It will be, their project would require a rezoning. Anytime there's a rezoning, everyone within, help me, 200, 200?
200, at least 200.
300? 300 yards? 300 feet of property where there's proposed rezoning is notified by, I believe, registered or certified mail. So there were some residents who lived close to that property who saw this and saw me tagged in it and didn't understand why there would be a groundbreaking for a project that we haven't even taken the first step in rezoning. I'm assuming that the mayor attended a ceremonial groundbreaking, and pictures were taken and pictures were shared, and I ended up tagged in it. So for any confusion, there was no official groundbreaking, no groundbreaking. I believe it was a ceremonial in nature, and, but it was confused, and I was tagged in it. So I got phone calls about why this project was happening. So anyway, there is no project happening yet. We are starting to see the paperwork and the related documents and requests work their way appropriately through all of the city channels and processes. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Toye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say it's such an honor to be born in December when you get Christmas paper on your gifts and when you, you know, get poinsettias as gifts. But, yeah, right. But in all fairness, we also have another December birthday here on our council. And I know it's a busy time of year, and we've, we do get caught up in that. But the youngest of us all up here, I don't mean to be the oldest, but the youngest, is Mr. Donovanick over here on the left. He has a birthday on the 30th. I think his parents were happy because they had still a write-off in that year. So I want to, along with, I know Councilwoman McIntyre and others want to wish a hearty birthday to Councilman Dominic, who brings another perspective to this council. Sometimes really, you know, just, I think, gosh, am I that old that I should remember that or know that? But he's, he's an amazing person, has done some amazing things in his short life. And I want to say happy birthday to a fellow December birthday. Happy birthday.
I think Mr. Donovanick was first, and we'll go to Mr. Barr.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to say happy birthday to the oldest person on the city council. Councilwoman Laura Toye. She's been a great friend, colleague, and also a mentor to us all. So thank you, December baby. And for all those December babies out there, I'm sorry that we all continue to get not all the gifts we want during our birthday and Christmas season. I just wanted to say well done to all of the employees and staff here at the city of Livonia. Another great, successful year. From me to you, thank you very much for everything you do for our city, for making sure we run the way we run and do the things we do. So I sincerely appreciate it, and all my colleagues here on city council appreciate your work and dedication to our community and to our residents. To residents, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. God bless you all, and look forward to another great and festival, festival, festival year in 2023. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Barr.
Thank you, Mr. President. So while this is not a council December birthday officially, anyone that's up here knows that our families essentially run for council, and we do. And we do have a December birthday coming up in our household this weekend. My oldest daughter is turning 19, which, so that means I've got one less child tax credit. And we're very, very excited to have Macy coming home this weekend from college. It'll be our first Christmas with the family coming home for Christmas, so very excited about that. Second thing I just want to mention is I was driving in tonight, and I've thought this many times and just thought tonight to say something, the Christmas lights on the city hall property, as usual, are fabulous. And as I was just driving in tonight, I thought, I just want to encourage Livonia citizens who haven't just taken a few minutes to drive through the city hall campus to do so. It's absolutely beautiful, and it should be enjoyed by as many people as possible. So, thanks.
Mr. Chair.
If I may, before we leave December birthdays, I want to, I want to say happy birthday to Marie Brosnan, because she was born right on my birthday and took my middle name. So I just, I would be remiss if we didn't wish Marie a happy birthday as Brian Meakin, Linda McCann, our former council people, and my niece and godchild as well. So happy birthday to everybody. It's a busy month. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough.
Thank you, Council President. Not to touch base on everything that was already said, but we got a busy month, obviously, with events going around the city. Touching base with Night of Lights at Greenmead still going on. If you haven't been there, I think they're taking donations of $10 per car. It's a great event. I know they double and triple the houses that they're lit up each year, and it's really starting to take shape. And there's hockey, there's Santa, Santa and Mrs. Claus, pretty good time. So if you haven't been out there, check it out. All the information's on the city's webpage. I attended recently the lunch with Santa with my wife and my daughter. And I want to give kudos to the Parks and Rec Department and the Way Church. They pull off this, this event every single year, and on peer donations, they serve lunch. And they have Santa read stories and literally hand out presents to all the kids that are there. It goes a long way, what they do, and everybody that's there, I think it sells out literally in three days. And so huge kudos to them and what they do and for our community. It's appreciated. Alpha USA has just celebrated their 65th anniversary. I had the pleasure to attend that event. Our friends over there do wonderful things in our community, from the immense donations to volunteering to another 65 years of providing a workforce. So thank you, Alpha, for 65 years. Hope for 65 more. I know, last thing I'll touch base on, if you're at the Livonia Rec Center, even Greenmead, there's a holiday tree competition that's going on. And I know some of, basically, if you go there, everybody's done such a great job. There's QR codes that you could place votes on, but it really dresses up, and thank you to everybody that took, you know, place in that. It really jazzes up the whole rec center area and even Greenmead. And last, and I'm gonna go on record and say this, my colleague Rob, Councilmember Donovanick, is playing in the hockey game. I'm gonna say that again. So mark your calendar for January 29th. Eddie Edgar, 1 to 3, we're facing off the Livonia All-Stars. Again, he said last time he was gonna try to check me. We're on the same team, all right? So we're gonna go and try to be, be a spectacle for everybody out there that wants to see us get beat up. We're gonna get beat up together, but that's fine. But no, it's gonna be a great cause. All the proceeds are gonna benefit Livonia kids and families. Again, tickets are gonna be online on Eventbrite, and you can get them right at the rec center. 10 bucks, great stocking suffers. You can watch us get beat up and raise money for a good cause. Who doesn't like that? So thank you, Council President.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. President.
Oh, Mr. Morgan.
Yes, I would, I would just like to simply say to all the city employees, thank you for a fabulous year. And also, I hope you have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And everyone out there watching, please have a safe holiday. And I hope you have a great Christmas and a Happy New Year. And moving into next year, I hope good things for everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. I will start by correcting myself. Earlier, I indicated that our next meeting would be January 18th. It is, in fact, on January 4th, and the minutes of this meeting will be approved at that meeting. We also have two other December birthdays. We'd like to wish a happy birthday to Jerome Hannah, our Director of Inspection, and Chief Gerauski, who's sitting in the back of the room. He's getting older as well.
Council President.
We have, we have new data on item number four, and we also have one X item on the agenda this evening as well. And as a personal note, I as well would like to wish everybody, all of our residents, our friends and neighbors, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. And wish you the best, and hopefully you all get an opportunity to...
Mr. President. I'm sorry, Mr. President. The first meeting that we come back is just a study. There will not be any votes taken in that meeting.
I apologize.
And so that's an 8 o'clock meeting. Then the following meeting will be the first.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry. I want to make sure we get it clear.
So like I was saying, though.
What date?
He's got the dates. I just know the schedule.
Thank you. So we'll be approved on January 18th then. Thank you. Okay, that concludes announcements from the council. We'll go to reports from the mayor and other city officials. We have a communication from the Department of Finance dated December 2nd of 2022 forwarding various financial statements from the city of Livonia for the month ending in October 31 of 2022. And a communication from the Department of Finance dated December 2nd forwarding departmental purchase reports for the month ending November 30th of 2022. We will now move to our scheduled agenda, starting with our consent agenda. This is items 1 through 3 this evening. These items were previously studied at the last study meeting on December 5th, and were found to be requiring no additional study and will be voted on as a single item. Do I have direction?
So moved. Support.
We have a motion to approve from Toye, support from Donovanick. Is there any audience communication on the consent agenda, items 1 through 3? I see none. Ms. Nash, will you take the vote, please?
Vice President Toye.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovanick.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. The consent agenda is approved. We will move to unfinished business with item number four. A waiver petition from the Planning Commission for Petition 2022100220 submitted by the Manic and Smith Group requesting to redevelop the sites, including demolishing the existing commercial building and constructing a new automated auto wash facility, a Clean Express, at 20330 and 20340 Farmington Road, located on the east side of Farmington Road between Norfolk Avenue and Eight Mile Road in the northwest quarter of Section 3. We have new data on this item. Additional information provided by the petitioner. Do I have direction, council?
Mr. President.
Mr. Donovanick.
I'd like to offer an approving.
Do I have support?
I'll support.
We have an approving motion from Donovanick, support from McCullough. Any comment from the council? Mr. Donovanick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to just point out a few things. We received a lot of information between this, this meeting and the last meeting from the petitioner's team, really good information and answered all my questions. And I think they were very direct to the questions that were asked at that last meeting. I think this will be a nice remedy for our community. I do not see any issues with that. I think it's been a beautiful new building.
I think it's been a beautiful new building instead of an older building that is now vacant. And I think it'll be a good product for our residents, and I look forward to it being a new business in our community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. McIntyre, we'll go to you first.
Thank you. I appreciate the petitioner's quick response on this item. They did answer all of the things that we had asked. We got some of the information, I believe, just yesterday. And I, I know that they were working diligently. I like to see things rebuilt and new businesses going up. There were a number of resident concerns on this, and we have an unusually short time between the study meeting and the voting meeting on this. It was only nine days because we, oftentimes, we end up with an odd schedule in December because of the need to get in two voting meetings. And given the fact that I'm still hearing from residents, and I want to hear out all their concerns and have a chance to talk to them a little bit more, I'm not going to support this. And we'll be offering another, a, another motion if this fails. But I, I do, I like the business. I support it, but I'm just not comfortable with the timing due to the number of resident concerns and questions.
Mr. Chair.
Did, Mr. McCullough, did you, did somebody over here indicate that they want to speak about this? Okay. Ms. Toy?
I too have just a, a little bit of concern about this, Mr. President and others. The residents have come out, and there's some unanswered questions. There truly is. And I just feel we haven't had enough time on this. I appreciate both my colleagues moving in. I believe strongly in small business. I'm not so sure. I believe strongly in the car wash where they're proposing it, especially, you all know, I have a problem with that color green, not because I went to U of M, but because the green is pretty limey, if you will. And I was just out in Novi the other, is it Novi off of Wixom Road? Maybe that's not Novi. Maybe that's, what city is that? Novi? In that car wash there...
Yes, I didn't teach geography very well at Bentley.
Yeah. At Bentley, it wasn't good on geography. Especially cities. Yes, you are correct. I must have skipped, I mean, missed that class. But what I'm saying is that, that particular car wash had navy blue on it, which I don't mean to debate color here, but it, it was a lot less in-your-face, if you will. And so, you know, that kind of thing bothers me. I wouldn't want to pull on my sub every day and see that and in those big arm looking things. So, I'm going to have a real problem supporting this at this time. If we could regress and take a moment and take a look at it and talk to our residents a little bit more, I'd appreciate it too. So, I'm willing to bend on that. But presently, I can't vote for it. Thanks.
Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, I would, I would like to suggest, is there, is there another option that we have to maybe push this up over to...
Somebody can offer a substitute motion if they would like.
Okay.
To put it into committee of the whole?
Yeah. You know what? I would like to do that. Maybe put it in a committee of whole, revisit this early next year. And I'm, I'm not terribly...
Do we have a motion on the table?
Yes.
So, we have a motion, a substitute motion from Mr. Morgan for committee of the whole. We have support from Ms. Toy. Is there any comments supporting the substitute motion from the council?
Mr. Chair, I have one just procedural question. We did this recently. I want to make sure I'm clear. When we vote on this, are we only voting to substitute?
Correct.
Okay, so, we're not voting for the substitute motion? We're not voting for his proposal yet?
Voting to replace what is currently on the table.
Okay, thank you.
Any audience communication in regards to substituting the motion from an approving to a committee of the whole? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
No.
Councilmember Donovan?
No.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The motion to substitute is approved. The motion on the table is now a motion for committee of the whole. Do I have direction on that motion or comment from the council? Yep.
Move it. You got to move it.
Yeah, okay. To move it forward. We want to move it forward.
Support.
Motion by Morgan, support by Toy. Ms. McIntyre?
I'm going to request, with all due respect, President Jolly, that you schedule that meeting as, as quickly as possible. Again, the petitioner has, has provided all the information that we requested. And I, I was not comfortable with moving forward with a yes vote tonight, but I, I would like this to move forward as quickly as possible because I think overall, we, there's a lot of sentiment that this may be a good business for that location. Thank you.
I agree. Noted. Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. I, I came into the meeting. I was appreciative of the petitioner to provide everything from lighting intensity to hours, vacuum, hours of the plan, exactly what we talked about during the study session. I do support, my colleagues want to put this in committee of a whole. If this was more in the summer and spring months, I might have changed this. But I think that going into the winter months, that again, if we get this, we can satisfy this before the buckets would go in the ground in the spring. So, if the petitioner is out there listening, I think this is kind of a downtime for the construction. And hopefully, we can get a solution and get rolling potentially by spring. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barr?
Appreciate the sentiments to move this quickly. I just want to say that I think as, as a council, and this isn't to strongly disagree with what we're doing here tonight, but my reason for voting no with going to committee was, or for the substituted, was simply because, as has been noted by a number of council members, there were a number of questions asked, and every one of those questions has been answered. I, I think the purpose of going to committee is to get more information. And we have the information that we need and where they directly addressed the questions that were raised at the last meeting. And also note that this has already been through a planning commission process. So, it's not like there has not been opportunity to comment on this. And just, that, that's my reason. I, I trust that we'll talk about it there and we'll get it moved through quickly. But when we have all the information available, I don't like stringing business owners and developers along. So, thank you.
Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd too like to echo Councilmember Barr's points. I respect my colleagues and their decision. That's okay. But I, I think that we've asked multiple questions, very good questions, and every single one of them has been answered by their civil engineer in a very thorough manner. So, I do sincerely appreciate those, those answers. It's not easy making decisions, especially in a, in a short period of time, like one of my colleagues alluded to. But I do appreciate that the petitioner, in a very timely manner and detailed manner, answered all of our questions. And the members of the community have had ample opportunity to participate in the process if they had any concerns. And I believe all those concerns have been met. And I look forward to this being scheduled immediately so we do not impede the future development of this property and this potential brand-new business that is investing millions of dollars into our community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I'll note that I see the petitioners in the audience. There probably is no need for you to come up at this point. I will schedule a meeting relatively quickly in the new year in regards to this, and you'll have an opportunity to discuss this in council in a little bit more of a casual environment if this does pass and goes to committee of the whole. Okay? Is there any audience communication in regards to this motion to refer this to committee of the whole? I see none at this time. Residents will be welcome to come to that committee meeting as well to share any concerns that they have. With no audience communication, Ms. Nash, please take the vote on number 4, referring this to the committee of the whole for additional study.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
No.
Councilmember Donovan?
No.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. So, this passes 5-2 as a referral to the committee of the whole. We will schedule that meeting, and that will be posted on the city website. And petitioner should receive notification as well, but early in the new year. Thank you. Moving on to item number 5, a request to approve adjustments in salary and benefits for appointed department heads for the period of December 1, 2022, through November 30th of 2025 from the mayor's office. First, let me say, this is a regular meeting. I need a motion from the table to move this forward.
Often approving.
Proving from McCullough.
I'll support for sake of discussion, Mr. Chair.
Support from Toy. We now have a motion on the table. We will go to Ms. Leibel as our HR and Civil Service Director. Please tell us what this is about, ma'am.
Thank you. This is to be able to put our appointed department heads to give them the raises that are in keeping and consistent with the raises that the rest of the city got. It would be 2% for 2022, 3% in 2023, and 2.5% in 2024.
Okay. Any directions from the council in terms of additional comments? I see none. Ms. McIntyre?
I, I appreciate the work our department heads do. We all, we have outstanding department heads. We certainly want to be competitive with our pay. We made a number of, of very, very significant increases last year, which was the right thing to do. I'd like, I, I don't feel comfortable voting to approve this. I'd like an opportunity to digest this a little bit more and look at some more comparable. So, I'm not going to support this, but I'm certainly open, I'm certainly open to discussing it. And it's not a lack of support for doing it. I just feel that I need a little bit more time.
Thank you. If there's nothing further from the council, we will go to audience. Ms. Toy?
Yeah. Is this the first time we're hearing about this? I, I'm sorry. I, I don't remember this being on a study. And remember, I'm older. So, you're going to, you know what I mean? Have we had this on a study?
No, I didn't think that it went to study. I thought it came to a regular meeting, as did the other wage increases.
Okay. I, I guess, I guess because of some of those reasons that, as the councilwoman pointed out, McIntyre, I'm having a bit of a problem with it too. Not that I don't think people deserve raises and, you know, in this inflationary time, I'm a little concerned. I want, you know, we just did a city budget. And I just, I, I'd like to pause for a minute and take a deeper dive on it, if you would, because we want to see you again, really, and talk to you. So, in, in all fairness, I'd like to also pause for a moment and just take a look at that. Okay?
Mr. President.
That's my comment. Thank you.
Mr. Donovan?
I'd like to offer this item for committee of the whole.
We have a motion on the table. Is that for a substitute motion?
Yeah, that'd be a substitute.
It's fine. I'll support.
So, we have a motion for subs, to substitute the motion for committee of the whole. We have the motion by Donovan, support by McCullough. Is that correct? Who supported that?
Let him support it. It's fine.
Mr. McCullough supported that. Any comments about substituting the motion from the council? I see none. Any comment from the audience in regards to substituting the motion? Do you have a comment on that?
No, I do on the agenda, but not on this.
So, seeing no comment on substituting the motion, Ms. Nash, please take the votes, substituting the approving motion for a referral to the committee of the whole.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
President Jolly?
No. The motion passes. The motion is now substituted on the floor. Do I have direction on that motion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Donovan?
I'd like to offer a motion to refer this item to the committee of the whole, please.
Do I have support?
Support.
Support from McIntyre. Any comment from the council?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barr?
I'm just going to, for the sake of the public's benefit, I'm just going to voice my struggle with this a little bit. I understand the concerns that have been expressed. I, I struggle with it because when I look at what this is actually doing, most of these items don't have to do a salary. They have to do with, you know, holidays and vacation time and those kind of things, which makes this consistent with what we've done with the other employees. I, I will note, and it is odd to me that this came directly to a regular. If I'm not mistaken, the last time this came directly for regular, we noted that was odd as well. It was because of, if I'm not mistaken, it was because of some compressed timing we were dealing with at the time, which is why it came straight to regular. But typically, this would come to a study first, which is maybe reason to put it in a committee. But as far as the salaries go, these are, I, I'll just say it. In the environment that we're in right now, these actually are not, they're not high as far as, as increases go. And I, I will, I will support putting this in committee so that my, so that we can get whatever questions my colleagues have answered. But I'll just be very transparent and say that based on what I'm seeing here, I've got a, I, I see the rationale on this and wouldn't have a problem with it. So, thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Toy, I'd like to pass the gavel.
Sure.
Madam Chair, can I have the floor for a moment?
Please, go right ahead.
Thank you very much. I will just note that this item, although it has not been to a study, and I, I understand that, I think the reason why it ended up as new business on the regular is to conclude the items that were pending before the new year because we cannot carry them over to the next. And based on when it came into the council office, it was placed on an agenda. I will just note that we have a history and a longstanding process in the city of mimicking negotiated contracts and the benefits that they provide and the salary percentage increases they provide, if any, for important department heads because they do not go through a negotiated contract process themselves. So, they are mimicked with what represented employees do get. There's nothing additional here, and this is a longstanding practice. And we've done this several times through my time on council the last seven years. Thank you.
Certainly.
Mr. President?
Yes, please, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. A number of colleagues have questions in regards to this item. So, since it did not go to a study, I think it's important that we have those discussions. Similarly, I, I think our department heads do a wonderful job in our community, and we have to make sure that we compensate them fairly. But there is questions right now about department heads in our community and for our city. And I think multiple council members have some questions. And I think if we're not going to have those questions right now because we didn't have a study, then I think committee of the whole would be an appropriate place to have those discussions. Thank you, Miss President.
Thank you. Councilman, who was that? Barr?
Yeah, just, well, I thought, so, again, just being transparent with my thought process for the public's benefit, Councilman Jolly makes an excellent point. Actually, when he was done speaking, I was like, yeah, I'm just, I'm just ready to move forward with this. But I think that the kicker for me is the fact that this is now the second straight contract that has not gone through a study meeting. And as Councilman Jolly, or Council President Jolly said, it's based on when it was submitted to the council office. We can't, we can't keep doing this. And I think the, the game breaker for me is the fact that we haven't had the study process. So, this essentially substitutes for that. I've told you what my feeling is about the proposal. But I think to give council the opportunity to ask whatever questions you want to ask, what's been proposed is appropriate. So, that's my transparency for you. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else from the city council? Anyone from the administration? Not a bunch of brave people here. Okay. Anybody from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one. Oh, I'm sorry. Go right ahead. I thought you were on another section.
I wasn't going to raise my voice and shout.
Oh, that's right.
Christopher Martin, Michigan. In viewing this, I'm looking at appointed, appointed department heads. Is that all of them? Which ones is that? She doesn't have to name off everyone, but is, is that a group of them?
It appears to be that way, yes.
It's a group?
Department heads, yeah.
I see her shaking her head. How many are in the group? 20? All of them?
Do we have that answer on the...
Through the chair. I'm sorry. I don't know that answer off the top of my head.
Okay, well, that's good. I'm glad that we're putting this in the committee of the whole. I think that's a very wise decision since you skipped the study meeting. Also, is there an increase in benefits by that? I mean, is, I don't know what they offer. Is there an IRA? Is there, you know, contributions or is there any of that?
I think that's why we're going to go to committee of the whole and get some of those answers.
I understand, but...
Yes.
I'm just saying, I, I believe this young lady makes over $100,000. So, I guess maybe that's a worthwhile question to ask. She should know that. So, yes or no?
I'm sorry.
Certainly. Janie, or I'm sorry, councilwoman and then...
People need to refrain from any sort of, people need to refrain from any sort of personal attacks.
Yes. Yeah. If you would...
Listen, this is not, I don't view this as a personal attack. I really don't. And the reason I'm saying that is I don't care what any of you or anyone in this building does outside of their work. I could care less. I do care when they have a job and they should have some answers and they get paid for that job. When I was at General Motors, I was a leader of skilled trades. I also was in the UAW as an official, and I treated everyone the same. I don't care what you do outside of work. I care what you do when you're in work.
We appreciate that. There are 15 appointees, just for your info. Councilman, go right ahead.
Thanks, Miss President. I'd like to point out that our HR director, Ms. Leibel, does a fabulous job. And every time I ask her questions, she may not have the question immediately answered, but she always does a fabulous job of getting those answers to me and the rest of this council body. So, I sincerely appreciate your dedication to this position. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And if I may offer an apology for not having that answer handy, I just didn't want to hazard a guess or give you incorrect information.
That's right. That's good. No, that's what we expect. Thank you very much. Yes, councilwoman.
I was just gonna point out that the appointed department heads are specified in an ordinance. I believe it's in an ordinance in personnel. All that information is available to residents. None of us knew off the top of our heads how many there were. Our department head, my, and I think I explained, and maybe I didn't do a good job of explaining why I wasn't supporting this. I just wanted some more time to digest this. Ms. Liebel is a new, is a new department head, and because we had had, put this directly on a voting meeting before, it seemed like that was the routine to follow. All of our department head salaries are based on comparables. And we did a lot of deep dive last year and the year before to ensure that our department heads were paid fairly, but also paid commensurately with the work that they do, and also to ensure that we were not overpaying department heads. And if you look at what Livonia pays department heads compared to many other communities, even smaller ones than ours, our department heads are not overcompensated by any, any market-based analysis. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Yes, councilwoman McCullough.
Thank you. Just a, just a quick follow-up. I look at this item and I, everything that reads, I'm in support of. I don't see that being an issue. I do agree that we could study it further and get some questions answered. I hope that we can push this forward soon with the committee of a whole to discuss and get some more answers. I will say, too, that all of our council packets and the hundreds of pages, they're, they're available right through our website. So anybody that would like to look in detail and see exactly what the item is, feel free to grab it. You can go right through the website. I think you could even call our council office. We'll make sure you get that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCullough, or Councilman McCullough. Anyone else? Hearing and seeing no one. We have no one else from the audience. Any concluding remarks?
I just want to thank you all very much for your support.
Certainly, certainly.
I look forward to seeing you.
Sorry, sorry, this was, you know, whatever it is. Council, let's see, you're the clerk. Okay, could you call the roll?
And this is to send it to committee of the whole?
It is, ma'am. Yes, as soon as possible.
Vice President Toy? I'm sorry, I'm gonna start that over again because.
Please do, yeah.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye. Motion passes. I'm handing the gavel back to the president.
Okay, thank you. We will proceed with item number six, a request to approve an additional expenditure from the engineering division for the 2022 concrete road maintenance and selective slab replacement program, contract 22J, with an additional not to exceed amount of $562,096.38 for the new total not to exceed of $1.4 million, noting council resolution 90-22. Can I have a motion?
All for an approving.
Support.
Approving from McCullough, support from Toy. Mr. Zalinsik, can you give us brief details in regards to this?
Sure. As you're aware, we had some repairs need to be done on Schoolcraft Road, mostly at Inkster Road in front of Holiday Inn Express. Now that the Mermon Road project from Schoolcraft to Five Mile was completed by Wayne County, we wanted to make sure we took care of those issues east and west of Mermon Road for the on-ramps as people get on and off. The pyramid was very deteriorated, and we want to make sure they were plowed properly and not have issues. Again, down by Farmington Road, east and west of that location on Schoolcraft Road, a very, as you all know, Farmington Road is very bumpy there. We're hoping to set up for Wayne County coming next year from Five Mile down to Farmington to get that resurfaced, as they've been out, out on Middle Belt, Six Mile, and doing a great job of getting those areas resurfaced. So we're hoping that'll come into fruition next year, especially with our fire and police being on Farmington Road and our school buses. And finally, just east of Levon, we did some work down there, and there was emergency repair just west of Newburg Road on eastbound Schoolcraft and a few locations. We took advantage of Great Lakes unit prices. Again, I know it's a lot of money, but again, it was an effort to make sure that the road was put back safely. And again, you know, taking advantage of this year's prices, as we all know, concrete's gonna go up next year. We had a shortage this fall. We were lucky to get that done, and I appreciate everyone's patience, especially this year without the construction on Schoolcraft, 275, the Mermon Bridge, Middle Belt Bridge. So this was definitely needed, and I do appreciate your support, obviously, to make sure that we compensate for their services and your patience during the construction.
Thank you. Is there any comment from the council? Mr. McCullough?
The council president threw the chair to Mr. Zalinsik. When do you, has this work already been completed?
Yes, it's been completed.
Okay.
Is there any audience communication on item number six? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Six passes. Moving on to seven, request to approve an additional appropriation and expenditure from the engineering division for construction engineering services for the 2022 concrete road maintenance selective slab program, contract 22J, with an additional not to exceed amount of $70,625 for a new total of $171,164, noting council resolution 91-22. Can I have direction?
Support.
Support.
Motion from Toy, support from McIntyre. Any council comments? I see none. Any audience comments? I see none. Ms. Nash, can you take the vote on seven, please?
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Seven passes. Moving on to eight, an acceptance of a grant of easement from the Department of Law for sanitary sewer secured, grant of an easement for a sanitary sewer secured without monetary consideration from Livonia Estates LTD 11870 Hubbard Road in the south half of section 27, parcel ID 46108990006007. Do I have direction?
All for an approving.
Support.
Approving from McCullough, support from Toy. Any council comment? I see none. Any audience comment? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote on eight.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Eight passes. Moving on to nine, an acceptance of a grant of easement coming to us from the Department of Law for a 20-foot-wide public sanitary sewer secured without monetary consideration from Jolly Road Properties LLC, 11878 Hubbard Road in the south half of section 27, parcel ID 46107030018004. Direction from the council?
So moved.
Support.
Motion from McIntyre, support from McCullough. Any council comment? I see none. Any audience comment? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote on nine.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Nine passes. At this time, I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Toy, support from Barr to suspend the rules. Any comment from the council on that motion? Any comment from the audience on that motion? I see none on either. Ms. Nash, please take the vote on suspending the rules.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The rules are suspended. We will go to item X1, that is a request to schedule a closed committee of the whole meeting from the Department of Law for the purpose of discussing pending litigation and attorney-client privileged communications with respect to Frederick R. Wheeler and Marilyn Wheeler et al. versus the city of Livonia, Wayne County Circuit Court case number 15-009025-NZ. Can I have a motion from the council?
So moved.
Support.
Motion from Toy, support from Donavich. Do I have any council comment? I see none. Audience communication on this item? Would you like to address item X1, ma'am?
Yes, please.
Okay, please tell me your name and address.
Jody White on Houghton Street in Livonia.
Thank you, ma'am.
Item X on tonight's agenda is a request for a schedule, quote, "a closed committee of the whole meeting," unquote, "for the purpose of discussing a pending litigation that has a jury trial scheduled for next year, March 28, 2023, and a settlement conference scheduled next Monday, on December 19, 2022." As a citizen of Livonia since 1987, I'm requesting that the Department of Law to put on the public record today during this open meeting for our community to know and understand what this public case is all about. I am hoping that the council elected to represent good governance on accountability and transparency can interject to help explain to the Livonia citizens what the settlement agreement is all about. This case can easily be researched and examined by going to the open records through the Register of Actions in Wayne County, but I'm hoping for a quick summary that can be placed on the record during the public meeting where a possible settlement agreement might be decided and that could cut Livonia residents, that could cause Livonia residents some financial harm. This lawsuit with the Wheeler family involves every voter and property owner here in Livonia. This lawsuit settlement must not be brought into a secret chamber or put off the public record, as it has a 2018 per curiam decision that clearly states that the Wheelers who no longer live in that home in Livonia are entitled to costs as the prevailing parties. What costs are they referring to? Is it the cost of attorney fees to battle this legal issue since July 9, 2015? It has been 2,715 days since a complaint was filed from a citizen in 2015 about our government employees who knew of a genuine issue of material fact. But instead of handling the situation in a timely manner, the Wheeler families have a jury trial in 2023. This isn't about quality of justice, this is not how quality of justice works. It appears to be more about quantity of justice. Having to wait over 89 months to have a claim be heard when sufficient evidence was provided to the court in a timely manner of the harms done by the government employees should not cost the taxpayers extensive attorney fees.
Thank you. I have to cut you off. Thank you, ma'am.
I have two more paragraphs. Who's cutting me off?
You've exceeded your two minutes. Thank you.
I thought I'd get three, because that's what I planned for. May I please have an extra minute? I'm asking for the council to help us.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to give her another minute.
Support.
Is there any objection from the council to extending for one minute? Okay, we're gonna have to keep that the old-fashioned way, probably. It's probably easiest, right?
Yes.
I'm almost there.
I have a timer.
Okay, you have one minute. Go. Thank you.
Having to wait over 89 minutes to have a claim be heard when sufficient evidence was provided to the court in a timely manner of the harm done by the government employees should not cost the taxpayers extensive attorney fees. The entity or sewer company that did the harm to this homeowner in Livonia should have their insurance or bond company pay for any costs entitled to the prevailing party. It should not be paid off of the tax dollars of Livonia property owners. We should be entitled to a full understanding of this claim, as the city of Livonia pled their case to have immunity. The people should have full knowledge of how much time and money was spent to fight a citizen over a lawsuit that should have taken a few months to settle. Again, please inform the citizens of item X and do not go back into secret chambers where this is an open court case. Elected officials have the duty to protect their constituents from undue financial harm when city employees know about the genuine issue but hired a lawyer instead. Thank you, and I do hope that you'll keep this public.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Toy?
I did move this, and if I may go to Mr. Burnier. Mr. Burnier, as long as I've been serving an elected service, whenever there's something like this, we, under the Open Meetings Act, we can go into private, not private session, but closed session. There's nothing unscrupulous about this, if I'm correct. I just didn't want anyone to be confused about that unless I'm confused, if you could help out.
No, you're not confused. We go into closed session so we can discuss attorney-client matters, strategy, possible settlements, those matters which you can't put, shouldn't put out in the public. Anything that, settlement that does come down, if there is a settlement or judgment that comes down, will be a matter of public record, which will be and can be discussed at the open meeting after the closed meeting. There'll be no vote taken at a closed meeting. There will be a vote taken on the issue at an open meeting sometime after. It's just to inform the council and get input from council on, on strategy and potential settlements.
Thank you for that clarity. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Please have a seat. You've extended your time.
I didn't know if you were gonna address me, so.
No. Ma'am, with all due respect, you've exceeded your time. There's no more time for you to address the council on this item.
You're an attorney, too, right, Mr. Jolly?
I am, ma'am. I'm not trying to give you a hard time. We're just, two minutes is the ordinance allowed time. Is there any additional comment from the council? Is there any additional comment from the audience? I see none in either. Ms. Nash, will you take the vote, setting this matter for a closed committee of the whole meeting? Ms. Nash?
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. That matter will be set for a closed committee of the whole meeting. At this time, that concludes all agenda items this evening. I will go back to the council for any closing remarks or comments. Mr. Barr?
One thing, Mr. President, that just occurred to me tonight. We recently learned that what used to be the Livonia Observer is stopping printing papers anymore. And I think their circulation physically was probably pretty low even before that at this point. We have a charter that requires us to do public notices through the newspaper. I'd like to offer a resolution that we put in the Law and Education Committee, the subject of how we publish public notices.
If I, if I might, Mr. Barr, if it's appropriate.
Well, we have.
There's also, there's a state law on the issue, too, that we're dealing with. And unfortunately, nothing we do here is going to trump state law. We're working with the legislature to try to get them to do something. And unfortunately, nothing we do here is going to change the need for publication on it. But just, that's just a point of information.
Mr. Chair. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Burnier, for that. It's part of the reason I'd like to put it in committee is just to better understand it. I think even beyond the, the law aspect of this, there's just the question of how to best communicate to our residents what's going on, which unfortunately, without a very strong local newspaper, I mean, there's a huge vacuum of information in this community from what there used to be. So I just, I'd like to put it there. It's maybe not an urgent item, but let's get it on the agenda, and at some point, we can have that discussion. Thanks.
Mr. Chair, which committee was that?
Law and Education, please.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Toy?
I just, since this is our last meeting of the year, it sounds.
We have a motion on the table.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there any comments on Mr. Barr's motion from the council? I see none. Any audience communication on that referral of Mr. Barr to the Law and Education Committee in regards to publication of city notices? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote. Is there a second?
Do we have support?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll support it. I did.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Toy was supported.
Okay, sorry, I hadn't heard that. It's.
Okay.
I'm quiet usually.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.